All right. Thank you, everybody, for your patience, as we have been flexible to for today's board meeting with the weather. Thanks for your patience. Ms. Smith has let me know that Dr. Winn has joined us, so we're glad to have all of our board members on this evening. Again, thank you so much. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order today's January ninth, twenty twenty four. It is five ten P. M. Again, we're starting a few minutes late. Apologies for that, but thank you to everybody for your flexibility as we had to transition this meeting from in person to completely virtual. So thank you for joining us tonight, and thank you to all of our staff who made all the adjustments to make sure that this meeting could go on as planned. So with that, I will read our board norms and protocols as we do at every board meeting. The board, we agree to respect differences of opinions and making decisions for the district to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we're following our norms when conducting district business. Again, thank you. Hope everyone's staying safe and warm. Welcome to all of our staff and to any guests that are watching tonight, whether on Zoom or on our YouTube channel. Thank you for joining us. Happy New Year, and it's great to see everyone again. So with that, Ms. Smith, can we please do a roll call?
Hold on just a second. Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, present.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, present.
Robert Mylan, Jr.?
Robert Mylan, Jr., present.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, present.
Dr. Winn?
Dr. Winn is connecting now.
Dr. Winn, present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith, for helping us get everyone online. Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan, Jr.?
Robert Mylan, Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Winn?
Dr. Winn, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda has been approved. All right. Again, welcome, everyone. The first item on our agenda, we are very excited to add a new board member and to swear in our returning board members. But Mr. Mylan, thank you for joining us. We're excited to have you join our school board and to be a part of the great things that we're doing here in KC KPS. Congratulations to you. Congratulations to all of our board members who were re-elected. We're really excited to work together and to build a team so that we can serve our community, our students, our staff, the best that we can. So tonight, as Mr. Mylan's first meeting, welcome to all of your friends and family who are joining us to watch this. We apologize that the weather didn't work out as we had hoped, so that they could join us in person. I know we had some folks that wanted to be there in person to cheer you on in this exciting moment. But this is just as exciting, hopefully, and thank you for joining us and watching us, everyone, as we welcome Mr. Mylan to the school board. With that, we do have Commissioner Abbott with us from the election office, who will swear our board members in. Mr. Abbott, Commissioner Abbott, thank you for joining us this evening, for making time. We're excited to have you with us, and with that, I will pass this on to you as well.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm just gonna jump right in, if that's okay.
Great.
I'll try to go slow, so bear with me here. It's kind of difficult to do it over Zoom, but if the members would raise their right hand for me and just please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The United States.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully and honestly
And faithfully and honestly.
Perform the duties of my office
Perform the duties of my office.
As board member of the Unified School District.
As board member of the Unified School District.
Number five hundred, Wyandotte County.
Number five hundred, Wyandotte County.
State of Kansas.
State of Kansas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Abbott, for that. We really appreciate your time. And thank you and congratulations to all of our board members and to Mr. Mylan for joining us as well. Any words, Mr. Mylan, to, since we're not in person, maybe any words to your friends and family who are joining us virtually? We'll give you a quick moment to do that.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President and Superintendent, and all that is involved here tonight. I just want to be brief and just say a warm hello to all the board members and the KC KPS school staff. I'm humbled and encouraged to be a part of this awesome and important task that that's before us and that lies ahead. And I'm looking forward, I look forward sincerely to be teamed up with the knowledge that is already on this board, and I sincerely mean that, on this board, the compassionate group that you all exemplify, and the wills and the sacrifices. I see that already, and the commitment, the time, the effort, the energy that helped make this district and attempt to make this district the best district that it can be. So I'm just looking forward to embrace and working with all of you in love and in kindness, togetherness with grace and a positive attitude as we strive for to just to be the best we can be. So that's the weather. The weather, it is what it is. It's a, I'm a God-fearing man, y'all know that, so this is how the Lord wanted to do this day. So I'm just glad to be a part, and I'm glad to serve. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mylan, and we welcome you. And to be fair and equitable, any of our returning or re-elected board members, if you have anything to say, I'm sure you probably have family or friends that are watching as well, so I will open the floor if there are any of you that want to share any words as well.
Well, I just want to say thank you for being so patient. Internet was not my friend this evening, but looking forward to serving and making progress. Thank you.
I will just piggyback. Again, also, thank you for another opportunity to be able to serve the community that I love and come from. So thank you to all those that are watching today.
And thank you to my board colleagues. All of us are in this because we care, we love this work, we love our students, we love our community. So thank you for your commitment and your passion and dedication to serve. It truly is a lot of work, and it truly is a blessing, though, to be able to come in and to work for our students and our staff and our community. So I appreciate all of your willingness to spend the time, dedication to do this work. Thank you to all of our constituents, our voters out there into our community. Looking forward to doing some great things tonight. And as we celebrate, as we move on to our next agenda item, it is school board appreciation. I do just want to give a shout out to our communications who had a very nice tribute to Ms. Janie Humphries, our outgoing board member. Thank you for sharing that, and I will pass on our next agenda item to Dr. Stubblefield.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for this space. We had planned to celebrate and appreciate you in person, but I will go ahead and read this proclamation from the Governor Kelly. It says, "The State of Kansas proclamation by the governor to the people of Kansas greetings, whereas the mission of public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and prepare them for future success. And whereas the Kansas Constitution entrusts locally elected school boards with the maintenance, development, and operations of Kansas public schools, and whereas local school board members are accountable to their communities for accomplishing the mission of public education in Kansas, and whereas Kansas Public School Board members advocate for our communities, our children, and our public school, and whereas the members of the Kansas Public Schools Board of Educations are committed to providing an excellent education for every child in each community, and whereas locally elected school board members devote countless hours to the governance of our public education system and success of Kansas children. Now, therefore, I, Laura Kelly, Governor of the State of Kansas, do hereby proclaim January twenty-four as School Board Recognition Month in the state of Kansas, and I urge all citizens to join in this observation. So I just want to say again, thank you for your commitment, your dedication to a very rewarding job, but also a very demanding and difficult job at times, and I do appreciate each and every one of you and your leadership and advocacy for the students in Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, and we look forward to celebrating with you in person at the next meeting, hopefully. Hopefully, it won't be any weather. So I'll turn it back over to you, President Lopez.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield, and again, congratulations to all of our board members. Thank you, Governor Kelly, and we will continue to work. Thank you for the kind words from our district representatives as well. So our next agenda item, board, we will have our student artwork. Hopefully, you got a chance to look at that on the agenda. We will have our student with us at our next board meeting in person. So we'll move on, but take a look at that artwork from our student. It's a great holiday card. Thank you for that to Israel and a student at Washington High School for his made artwork. So look forward to that presentation as well at our next board meeting. Our community comment policy section for our next agenda item, again, everyone is welcome to participate in community comment. Please just contact our board clerk so that we can get you signed up. I believe, Ms. Smith, correct me if I'm wrong, our person, Mr. Young, who was to speak tonight, will actually speak at our next board meeting. We were in contact with him, and he preferred to defer to the next meeting, so we will not have Mr. Young tonight speaking with us. So we'll look forward to hearing from Mr. Young at our next board meeting. Our next agenda item, item number five A, this evening, board, hopefully you had a chance to review the audited financial statements for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. This is in front of us for the board to accept the audit for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. So with that, I will pass it along to Dr. Stubblefield.
Thank you, and I believe I'm handing it off to Brad and Tracy, and we do have the representative from the company who audited us that will give a brief overview and answer any questions that you may have. Brad, we can't hear you. I don't know if your volume is turned down.
Sorry, is that better? All right. Good evening, and Mr. Lopez, Dr. Stubblefield, and board. Brad is our Director of Finance. Before you this evening to present our audited financial statements for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth of twenty-three. First, just wanted to thank all of the district staff and administration that assisted us with providing documentation for this audit. It is a yearly process we go through every year, but it's truly a team effort between several different departments, and finance could not do it alone. So we do appreciate all of the assistance. Happy to report that the audit went very well this year. Again, as always, with no material weaknesses or deficiencies found, which truly says a lot about the great work done by the members of the team every single day. It's not just a one-time-of-year process. Really takes good, strong internal controls and dedicated work year-round. So to take us through the audit report this evening and answer any questions that you may have, we have Jonathan Nybarger, who is the Vice President of Assurance from our audit company, AGH. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to him, and John, if you want to screen share and just go through it, you're welcome to, or we could have the IT team do that, if you're not prepared for that.
Yeah, I wasn't prepared to screen share, but I can do that unless, if they have it readily available, that's fine.
I don't have a copy of the presentation.
I can pull up the reports real quick.
It is attached to the agenda.
I think I've got it here. Just a moment. Okay.
Perfect. Well, good evening. I'm Jonathan Nybarger with AGH, and I was the officer in charge of the twenty twenty-three audit. I'll briefly go through our audit and reports with you this evening and then answer any questions that you may have. Looks like the first item there is the financial statement, and so I'll begin there. And our first report there in the financial statements is our auditor's report, which begins there on page one and is on pages one through three in the financial statements. The opinion you can see there is the third paragraph, and we issued an unmodified opinion on the regulatory basis of accounting. An unmodified opinion is the highest and best opinion that an entity can receive, and I feel like that also speaks very highly on the financial management of the district. Then, moving on to the next report that we issued, I was going to skip later in the financial statements to page forty-two, or really forty-four is probably the best summary of the results. But the district receives an audit over their schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And so, yeah, one more that page there. That's really probably the best summary of the results of our single audit. The district receives a single audit because the district spent more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal awards, and they are required to receive a special audit over those expenditures. The grants that we audited for the twenty twenty-two year are listed there at the bottom. The Head Start and the Educational Stabilization Fund, or ESR Fund, that you may be used to hearing. I'm happy to report that we did not have any findings noted as part of this grant that's, or either of these grants that summarize there on the federal award section towards the middle of that page. And then also towards the top of the page there discusses the financial statement results as well. And as Brad already mentioned, we did not have any findings through, from our financial statement audit either. The next piece that I will go through is a separate letter that we issue, and it's called a governance letter or an auditor's communication letter to those charged with governance. This is about a six-or-so-page letter that includes required standard communication to board members to keep them all informed about significant matters relating to the audit. I won't go through every piece in the letter, but we'll just kind of hit some of the key points. The first being towards the top of the second page, and notes that we did not have any or did not identify any unusual transactions as part of our audit this year. The next section then is estimates that are included in the financial statements. There is one estimate included in the district's financial statements. Not all numbers are hard and fast numbers. Some of these amounts have to be estimated, and this estimate relates to the caper's net pension liability and is disclosed in the footnote five to the financial statements. And then the next section notes that we did not have any audit adjustments that were required by the district to make their books in compliance or correct. However, the district did elect to pass on recording an amount related to accrued payroll, and this is considered immaterial overall to the financial statements. Ultimately, the goal for our audit is to ensure that the district complies with laws and regulations, our internal controls in place and functioning effectively, and do the financial statements accurately reflect the books and records of the entity. And I'm happy to say that, based on our audit, the answer to all of those questions is yes. And throughout the rest of the letter, I don't really have any other key points, you know, feel free to peruse, but in closing, I would like to say that we greatly appreciated the assistance and cooperation of the district. An audit is a huge undertaking, and we appreciate all of their help in completing the audit. So thank you for your time this evening, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
We'll open the floor for any questions. Thank you, Mr. Nybarger, for sharing.
Yeah, Mr. Lopez, this is Wanda Page, and I'm trying to understand in one part, and I thought it was said on the front page and the last page, where it said material weaknesses or significant deficiencies may exist that were not identified. And I was just wondering, why wouldn't they, if it's something that we can do to make it even better, why wouldn't they be identified?
That's really just kind of standard language that's included in our letter to basically say that there may be instances that we're not aware of. However, we, anything that has come to our attention as auditors throughout the audit, we would have disclosed and presented to you along with the recommendation to fix any of those errors. So we're not aware of anything, but there is a possibility, I guess, that there might be something out there that we're not aware of.
So you would say this no matter what, even if you're saying that there may be, but you're not gonna comment on it, if I understand you correctly.
We're saying that we did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies as part of our audit, but there may be instances in an area that we might not, might not have come to our attention. But we're not aware of any, any material items that are incorrect in the financial statements or any control issues as part of our testing. But that, that is really saying there might be control issues that didn't come up during our testing that may exist. But at this point, I'm happy to say that we're not aware of anything.
Well, I just thought that was a little strange, but you answered what you said. Okay.
Ms. Russell?
I just, to Mrs. Page's point, I maybe just want to clarify, Jonathan, that general statement is typically made because you are taking a sample. You didn't go line by line, every item. And so, generally speaking, based on the random selection of things you gathered, you saw no issue. However, that may mean things that you did not examine potentially could have error in them, but as a part of your entire audit, that is not, or the portions for which you sampled, you did not find any of those. Is that correct? I want to make sure I'm understanding your.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Seeing none. Again, thank you, Mr. Nybarger, for the information. Thank you, Mr. Isner and Ms. Kaiser, and your teams for working on this. Again, everyone that participated with this. I know it's a lot of work, so thank you all for working on that. If there are no other questions, we're entertain a motion to accept the audited financial statements for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
I will second, but I, or is the letter, I believe the last couple of years, we've gotten the letter in an envelope. Is that at Central Office? There were follow-up documents that have been provided to the audit.
Ms. Russell, we do have paper copies available at district office that I would have handed to you this evening, had we been in person. But obviously, that couldn't happen this time, so we'll get them out to you either through mail or at the next meeting, if you'd like to have a copy just to keep on file. But we thought that the electronic version would be enough in this case. The only other document that comes with the financial statements to you is a copy of the governance letter that's also included on the agenda.
Okay. I, I would like to see that. I, all of the things are very small when reading them. So I saw nothing glaring, but I would like the opportunity to review the document in full with a paper copy. So, second, thank you.
Thank you. So there's a motion and a second. Any additional questions? We'll make sure that we get that to all board members. As Mr. Isner said, they have them available, so. Seeing no additional questions, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan, Jr.?
Robert Mylan, Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Winn?
Dr. Winn, yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Our next agenda item is item number six, board, entertain a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under the Kansas Open Meeting Act to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, Dr. Campbell, Chief Nicholson, Mr. Lilly, and Ms. Samree Devon. Is there anyone else, Dr. Stubblefield, that I was missing? Okay, to go in at, we'll give folks a couple of minutes, five thirty-eight for fifteen minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, discussion?
Can I get that link? I don't remember seeing it.
Yeah, I emailed it this afternoon, Ms. Page, but I will resend it right now to your, to everyone's email, just to make sure it's there. Any questions? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan, Jr.?
Robert Mylan, Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Excuse me. Dr. Winn?
Dr. Winn, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. A motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan, Jr.?
Robert Mylan, Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Winn?
Dr. Winn, yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. We're back in open session, board. We will continue with our agenda. Item number seven on our agenda is our consent agenda. Would entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I would like to set aside item H. And with that, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda minus item H. Any additional questions?
Yeah, I'd like to set aside item E, and I just need a little information before I vote on it.
I can, are there any other items that folks want to pull before we amend the motion on the floor? Carrying none, Ms. Russell, Ms. Drew, would you do a friendly amendment to your motion to approve the consent agenda minus items E and H?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan, Jr.?
Robert Mylan, Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Winn, yes, but Mr. Lopez, when you have, and Mr. Goheen can clarify, I don't think you have to have approval of the people who make the motion for a set aside.
I think that's correct. In the future, if it's just pulling an item, I don't think you have to have a, a motion to do that.
Okay, I just, that, that works. Thank you. Okay, so motion carries. Thank you. So we'll take on item E first. Ms. Page, do you have a question for item E?
What will be the starting time? Are we starting at five?
Or?
For our meetings, because originally, when that came out, it talked more about.
Letter H, or F, I'm sorry. E was.
Item E. You mentioned E.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Public school bills, I mean, library bills.
No, under the, item E is official me, unless they change the agenda. When I read it, it was E, official meeting time and place, because I had asked about that question. When I read it, it was E, official meeting time and place, cuz I had asked about that question earlier. Because it provided more information originally when it came out. About uh, voting for the president and the vice president of the board, which would be in July. But the label, the heading was meeting time and place, I just wanted some clarity.
So, Ms. Page, it did get updated, uh, there was item, uh, item added for, to approve the library. Uh, human resources, like, so it dropped to F. Greg, I don't know if she's really talking about E, not F.
I, my, my suggestion is that we have Leslie amend the minutes to reflect that the item that was intended to be pulled was F and not E. And then we go ahead and discuss F, I think that's the most expeditious way to handle this.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so item, the item to discuss is item F, and so your question, Ms. Page, again, is just.
I just wanted to know, what was the time?
So, uh, Ms. Page, that, the, uh, you all decided that in July. And because the statute says that it actually should occur in January, every January. Those two items are on the board agenda to say that you will establish the, the, um. You'll do the elections and then you'll establish the meeting time and place in July. And the purpose of this was just saying that you would do that in July. Um, a written, um, Ms. Smith updated, after your question, she updated it and added. Um, the one that was, um, not on the agenda.
Okay, so July, we'll do time, place, and the election, cuz I'm sorry, I didn't see that, I read it earlier. I didn't see the update, so I just wanted clarity before I voted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, yeah, so we'll, we'll, times, current times are, have been set at the last July meeting for five o'clock. But we, we will discuss that at the July meeting, thank you, Ms. Page. Additional questions on that item, Ms. Page, or anyone else? Okay, um. Motion to approve item F?
So moved.
Second.
Moving, seconded, additional questions, discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Junior.
Robert Mylan Junior, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Excuse me, Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, next item is item H, Ms. Russell?
I don't have any questions, I, I think I, I pulled this item because I am not supportive. Um, as shared in the prep meeting, I have concerns around us continually paying for things and them. Either, whether it be the workload, whether it be the service provider, whether it be our internal capacity. Um, I, we got some response to my concern. Um, but I did not feel like it was sufficient enough for me to want to vote yes on this item, and so I don't have any questions further. However, I will be voting no on this issue, and I will continue to express my concern. Um, in the amount that we pay for this service, yet we are not getting, um, all of the things are not up and going, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell, um, are there any other board members with questions on item H? Or, um, anything staff would like to share on item H?
Mr. Lopez, this is the question to Ms. Russell, what don't you think they're not getting?
So some of the, so we over the last year have approved, year and a half have approved for additional analytics, additional. Um, end user, so me as the parent, things that would. Um, so one thing, if you all remember at a meeting, they mentioned we'd be able to, as a parent, I'd be able to go into Infinite Campus. And say, my student will not be, uh, present today instead of, uh, having to call the school. Um, and so we are continually paying for those services. And so if that is a service that we're paying for, but our staff can't provide. And or, um, we're unable to have sufficient workload, I don't believe that we should continually pay for those things. Um, those are dollars that could be better spent other places, especially when we talk about parent, um, student engagement. Um, and if we're, if Infinite Campus, which we talked about in the prep, is not the answer for our district. Then we should look other places, but I'm not saying we should just get a new system. I just have issues with us continually to adding analytics or work, work, whatever they call them. Um, and we're not using them, so that, that's where my concern comes from.
Yeah, and, um, Ms. Russell, I, I completely hear you. I'm just sharing publicly that those things were added, this one, unless I'm missing something, we're not adding anything. The training for, um, those, um, additional things and that has happened. That has happened and it is happening, and so the, um, what I shared, uh, in, what I'm going to share is. The goal is for the, the next group that needs to be trained are the building, um, secret, attendance secretaries. And then, um, that will feature would be available for us to start to share out for parents to do it for those who want to be trained. So I acknowledge, like, that is behind and we're navigating through it, but the, um. Uh, Infinite Campus team does have a plan, so the, all of the things that we are, we have purchased. That they're actually being implemented, but when we brought it to the board, we did share. That the training from Infinite Campus to the different levels, it, uh, takes time, um, what we.
We've been training for two years, and I kid you not, people can go to a parent-teacher night. Because that's oftentimes where people are told, oh, you have to do something. Um, and come to whatever advocacy day, and people still, our staff don't, aren't able to help families. And that's not okay, nor is it the responsibility of the Welcome Center. So I guess that's just my ongoing issue, is not that you're adding something today. But the fact that, like, we've been training folks for two years and our system across the board doesn't have a good understanding of Infinite Campus. Nor, when, and I mean, we can get into the weeds of what's not working. Or when Canvas doesn't connect with Infinite Campus, so my gr, my child's grades are different in Infinite Campus than they are in Canvas. I mean, in, um, oh, it's not even Canva, um, but I'm just saying, those are things that we said. Would help make our user experience, but also make it easier for our staff, and they're not, just not happening, so. I will digress, but I just wanted to vote no, that was all I wanted to do.
Okay. Dr. Nguyen, if you.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up then, so Dr. Stubblefield, if at a certain date everyone is trained. What then is the target date? For full operational capacity, if that's a correct term?
So for different features, there are different dates, I could, I can get with the IC team and put it in the end of the week. Um, this week, I don't have it off the top of my head, I just know when our last conversation was. Um, there are some things that'll be ready, like, um, in late spring. There are some things that are already happening, there are more behind the scenes, the analytic stuff, so those people are fully using that. So I can include that in the end of the week with, like, target dates and what their timelines are. Dr. Conrad, but I, I just, them.
With full respect, if you also include it on the webpage, it really holds people's feet to the fire about meeting that date. Cuz if you only give it to us, not to say that it'll be another X days. But, you know, somebody's kinda has to make it a drop-dead date and then be held responsible.
Yep, and we can do that, we can send out the communication.
And then, Ms. Russell, well, however you communicate to your other parents, you have a little bit to hang on to, but. You know, unless, you cannot be the only parent that is not receiving the benefit. You know, parents have to make their voices heard.
Oh, you could just go to a family advocacy night and learn.
Well, then you tell them to raise their voices louder, because obviously, they're not being heard, I didn't say listen to, I said heard.
Thank you, are there additional questions on item H? If not, is there a motion on the floor to approve, um, item H?
They moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Smith, roll call please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Junior.
Robert Mylan Junior, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, no, cuz I too have people who are concerned. And we keep going over this with Infinite Campus, it's not working for everybody.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, no.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, we will continue with our agenda, our next agenda item, item eight, uh, first up is, um. The bond resolution, it is recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve, approve the bond resolution submitted by Gilmore and Bell. The amount of four hundred million dollars for the district improvements with up to twenty million dollars to assist in the funding of a new main public library.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, are there questions or discussion?
Yeah, so help me do the math, if the, if the bond resolution says four hundred million and your legal documents have a ten million dollar, um. Also, for lack of a better word, service fee, why are we, why are the numbers different?
Uh, Mr. Lilly, or is there someone out here that wants to?
Yeah, uh, Mrs. Esposito.
Uh, good evening, board members and Dr. Stubblefield, um, my name is Shelby Esposito and I'm an attorney at Gilmore and Bell. Uh, we serve as the district's bond counsel, and so we're excited to be here with you tonight to talk about this, um, resolution. Uh, the resolution that we have proposed for adoption tonight would authorize bonds up to four hundred and twenty million dollars. And so that would be, uh, the total of four hundred twenty million that's in this, um, recommended motion on the agenda there. And, um, this accounts for the projects that were discussed at the prior meeting. Um, this is the first time you have seen us, but we've been working with, uh, Michael Abbott, who was here earlier, the election commissioner for the county. Along with the Kansas Secretary of State's office and the Unified Government's Legal Department for the past several months. To schedule this election and make sure that everything falls within the timeframe that's needed on the district's end for its purposes. Um, so I, if you have any other questions, uh, let me know and we'll be happy to field those.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Esposito, but you did not ask, answer the question, the question said, was, excuse me, as you explained, four hundred twenty million. However, and if I'm not mistaken, and if someone, could you share your screen, someone, the resolution says. Let's see this, the screen, please.
Yes, uh, the resolution says four hundred and twenty million dollars.
So I think, I, uh, to the, I think the total at the end of the financial as, assets, it says. Four hundred and sixty-ish, if I'm not, is that the four sixty mil number you're talking about? Once you turn it, once you add the, um.
No, I'm looking at the legal documents that say four hundred and thirty million with the ten million dollars in attorneys' fees. Bond fees and things like that.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Dr. Nguyen, I'm seeing what you're seeing now in Exhibit A, so, yes, so, so the summary of project costs. So in essence, the bonds that would be issued would only be four hundred and twenty million dollars. That is the maximum amount that would be in the ballot question on the May seventh election. And that is the maximum principal amount of bonds that would be issued. In terms of the additional ten million dollars, uh, there would be some capitalized interest, which is the interest during construction. And there would be bond issuance costs for paying for a credit rating, uh, financial advisor, underwriting and other expenses. And those costs total about ten million dollars, uh, we do anticipate some interest earnings of about ten million dollars. And so that is how those two sort of offset, uh, there could also be a premium when the bonds are sold that could pay for issuance costs as well. But the maximum principal amount of the bonds would be four hundred and twenty million.
So my question is, where does the ten million additional come from?
And that comes from interest earnings and premium on the sale of the bonds.
So it's, is it paid from our existing, is it paid, how is it paid, is it paid from existing funds or not?
Excuse me, uh, no, ma'am, it is not paid from district funds, it is part of, in essence, when you go to sell the bonds. Sometimes bidders want to pay a premium for the bonds, and so they are essentially paying more. In order to pay a premium on the bonds and then that money would pay the costs.
So when will you know those final costs of the breakout of the ten million?
And, ma'am, that would not happen until the bonds are sold, and so you are not committing the district to sell bonds with the resolution that is tonight. You are not committing to any, any future sale, essentially. You are just simply authorizing the election question to be put on the ballot for voters in May. And so what would happen next, from the board's perspective? Is that this resolution also authorizes an application to the Kansas State Board of Education. In order to issue these bonds in excess of your debt limit. So district staff would then be, if you approve the resolution tonight, submitting that application this week. We would then, if that is approved, go to an election in May. And then if the voters approve the question and vote yes in May, then the district would be able to issue bonds in the future. And so they could issue all of the bonds later this year, or spread it out over several years, whatever makes sense from the construction schedule. And, um, the necessity of money for the various projects.
And thank you, and, and Greg, I'll ask you this question, because Dr. Stubblefield, I don't, I, I can ask you and Greg. What concerns me is that, why was not the board, um, consulted? Ms. Esposito says that you all have been having, or she and staff, I guess, having these conversations with. UG Abbott over months in determining the date of the, the election. And we are the governing body and we are not only an up or down as far as when the, the election will be held? What, what is, how is that, um? A, a fair exercise of your authority and a fair respect of our authority?
So, uh, Dr. Nguyen, I will share this, um, when all of the conversations came about, we, like every other district. Myself as the superintendent, anytime there is a potential for the bond, we work through all scenarios. So that we can be prepared to bring it to the full board, so that is not uncommon and that's not anyone. Uh, from my, from my perspective and Greg can share with you, because if the board had voted no. Then none of this will be coming forward, but we just, on the backside, would have to say, so if the board said yes. Here are the possible, uh, date options, and when we looked at it with the UG. And others, given the timeline with this year being a presidential election.
Exactly.
Yes, so this, this is what was brought forth and, um, but that is honestly not uncommon. Now, if the board wants to say, uh, that's not what they wanna do, I mean, you can vote, all of these are. Us bringing recommendations based off the process of, of taking a bond, um, to the community. And when I looked at what occurred previously here and also another district, this is not out of line with that.
No, I, please, please, I am not saying it's out of line, I'm saying with respect, I also, as a government member of a governing body. Decide, have the ability to decide, do you do it before, let's, with the presidential pri, preference primary, I know it's forty-five days. You cannot have an election forty-five days, within forty-five days of, of the nineteenth, when that primary is held. So I know that, we could have been informed of it, I'm not suggesting you have done anything illegal, irregular. I'm saying with respect for us to have some input in saying perhaps the primary, perhaps a June. But, but to say, oh, and, and, and again, with respect for you to say, oh, yeah, the board can say tonight, oh, no, we wanna change the date. again, with respect for you to say, oh yeah, the board can say tonight, oh no, we wanna change the date. That's not logical. And I, I do not, um, with respect, I don't appreciate the, um, statement that the board can change things. You know, good and well, the board's not gonna change things tonight. So I'm just saying, one would have thought as a governing body, we would have had some input into the date of the, of the election, but it's over and done, but I, I must be true to my constituents who question, you know, why didn't you all choose X? I, I don't know if the other members knew of the preferential primary date and the forty-five day exclusion. It could have been mentioned. So, I don't know, Greg, hey, that could have settled the, the conversation. It's, it's, uh, it's what it is. So thank you very much.
Are there additional questions or discussion on this item?
Dr. Nguyen, I just wanna clarify. So when Dr. Stubblefield sent out the, in her end of week prior to winter break, she sent us all of the schedule. Was that not sufficient enough for if people had concerns around the date? I just wanna make sure that, like, I hear what you're saying, but I also, she did send us a calendar of what it could look like and that to me would have been our, our opportunity if someone had concerns, valid concerns, which you're presenting tonight, um, around changing the date of the election. I'm not as familiar with the forty-five days that you're talking about, but I also just wanna make sure I understand what other opportunity could have been presented for us to, outside of a board meeting, for us to have had feedback on this.
Well, thank you, Ms. Russell. I think I made my statement clear. So thank you.
There are no additional questions or discussion. Um, thank you for that. Um, there is a motion and a second on the floor. With that, Ms. Smith, uh, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Junior.
Robert Mylan Junior, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, no.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Uh, as expected, I will vote no, and I think it's even more, um, disrespectful of our community who, you know, instead of being moderate and maybe taking a middle ground, we have chosen the most expensive maximum amount, um, and in my opinion, it rips off the community. So I vote no. And I anticipate continued, um, smearing. So thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, board. Um, so we will continue to move forward, uh, with the resolution, um, and, and, uh, thank you for everyone's hard work um, to get this, um, where we're at. So we'll continue to get information. Thank you. Our next agenda item, item B. It is recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the recommendation to approve the proposal from C and C group and the amount of seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred dollars for the replacement of existing universal network controllers with new automation servers at twenty-two sites.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions?
Yes.
Ms. Page, please.
Yeah, uh, Argentine and the library are on there. In lieu of the bond, if it passes, is that money still gonna be spent on those places? And there's a possibility for them to be torn down. It just seems like a waste of money to do that. And they will no longer exist. Just asking, I'm just trying to figure it out. Cuz we wanna spend the money and get the bang for our buck. And it just doesn't make sense to spend it on these two. And there's a possibility they could be torn down.
If, if I could address that, this is Doug Clements, uh, good evening, everybody. I'll say, I'm gonna make it clear. I think it's spelled out in the agenda item that this is intended to be spread out over two years. So what I would probably, uh, suggest we do is hold off on those properties that may be impacted by future bond work and, and postpone those till next year and do the other ones first. It's, it's a matter of coordinating and sequencing in a logical manner. So that's what we'll do.
Okay, I was just wondering cuz it just didn't make sense.
Thank you very much, yep.
Okay.
Do you have additional questions? Not, there is a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Junior.
Robert Mylan Junior, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next agenda item. It is recommend the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the purchase of new cafeteria tables for Hazel Grove Elementary and Sisai Furnish, Furnishings in the amount of thirty-three thousand ninety-two dollars and thirty-five cents.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions in this board discussion? Saying and hearing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Junior.
Robert Mylan Junior, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Our next agenda item eight D. It is recommend the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the recommendation to donate surplus items to Early Learners Academy. Is recommended by Mr. Wayne Correll and is recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there questions? Ms. Russell, yes.
As shared in our prep meeting, I still had questions regarding, um, how we got to this. Um, and I did not see that in any of the information provided. Um, really a process question, um, of how we got to this.
And I, I apologize, the intention was to put it in the end of the week, um, and it didn't get in there. Um, but the, uh, and, uh, Dr. Cook is on here and can probably, um, fill in the gaps. But the, what happened was that a lot of the furniture was donated to us from, um, a facility, Dr. Cook, if I'm saying it wrong. And then, um, as part during COVID, when new furniture, the different things were purchased because of the, um, different regulations, this furniture has been set aside in this particular um, place, uh, needs furniture and I think they're all part of the same consortium, but I'm gonna pause and let Ms. Cook um, uh, fill in the gaps around that.
Okay, um, yes, this furniture, uh, we've had for several years, probably, uh, more than ten. And when we were able to purchase new furniture through COVID funding and other funding, uh, this furniture has been sitting, um, in a storage facility for a while. Um, none of our early childhood centers need to use it or have a use for it anymore. And so this, uh, there's a new childcare opening up in Wyandotte County. And they came to us just to ask for assistance with getting started. And because they don't have a lot of startup funds, um, this was something that we decided to look into because it was furniture we were not using any longer.
Dr. Stubblefield, do we have an asset inventory yet?
Yes, we have an asset in the inventory. Are you referring to the book? We've always, and, uh, as the Motley's owner, we've always had an asset inventory. We didn't have, what we were inventorying was our, um, books. If I'm misspeaking, Wayne or somebody speak up, but we, I know we send out a sheet every year because in the superintendent's office, I have to list all of the, um, things that are there.
Yeah, the risk management department conducts an inventory every year and they, they maintain an ongoing, um, asset inventory. Uh, we can get that from them and provide it to you if you wanna see it.
Well, it probably should be someplace. I remember from the, uh, perhaps two thousand seventeen legislative post office audit noted that there was not an asset inventory.
Yeah.
An inventory of assets.
Right. Well, it probably, and result of that, they, they do the inventory yearly now and they have an up-to-date, uh, asset inventory.
Thank you.
That's available.
And that, please remind me, did you say that there was a current policy or regarding um, the disposal of inventory from our books to someone else? Um, and Wayne, is this also in line with how we dispose of other inventory?
Yeah.
Based on, and I'm, the first thing that comes to my mind is like, we have disposed of iPads and technology, but I don't know the other inventory asset things if this is similar to that process.
Yeah, generally, we, uh, sell things by audit. I mean, not by audit. By auction. I'm sorry, I haven't spoken for a couple of days. Uh, sell things by auction. This, uh, any donations that we make always come to you all. And so it's always your province to approve or disapprove, you know, these kinds of requests, but, um, that's our standard process. Uh, Senetic, uh, handles our IT-related, uh, disposals. And we get, we get a, uh, a payback from that. Um, but, um, yeah, whenever we get requests for donations, we'll always run them by you.
Thank you.
As a board.
I'll make the motion to, did we already make a motion? If not, I'm happy to, okay, great. That was all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell and, and staff. Additional questions on this item? Saying and hearing none, uh, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Junior.
Robert Mylan Junior, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Uh, board, next up, we have agenda item number nine. Uh, tonight, we will hear a report from our special education cooperative, um, and we welcome, uh, Dr. Lowry with us this evening. Dr. Lowry, thank you for joining us. Uh, we wish we could have been in person for your report, uh, but, uh, this'll have to do tonight. So thanks for being flexible as well and to your and your team to getting this report ready. So I will hand it off to you, Dr. Lowry. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, can everyone see my screen with the presentation on it?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, thank you so much. So good evening, um, Board President Lopez, Vice President Drew, all of our board members, Superintendent Stubblefield, our staff and community members. Um, I would like to thank you again for allowing us this opportunity to give you a mid-year sped update. Um,
As, let's see, okay, yes.
Um, as we stay grounded in our mission and our vision, we continue to stay focused on our priorities that also aligns to our key goals, our board goals, our district, uh, priorities as well. We continue to focus on, um, our department's goals. And we also like to, uh, ensure that the work that we're doing and the um, decisions that we make in our special education department really truly is leading us to be better each and every day. Um, and I do hope, it is my hope that we, uh, find that to be evident, um, day to day as we work to support our students, our buildings and our parents and community. Um, I would like to start by sharing just some general information around the numbers in special education that we serve. For someone to pull that down a little bit. Um, our active exceptional students as of this year, we serve four thousand three hundred and twenty-seven students in the cooperative. Of those students, IDEA, which are students with disabilities, um, around thirty-nine hundred and then our students that are gifted around four hundred. When we look specifically at the numbers of students that we serve in Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, we serve three thousand two hundred and thirty students, students with disabilities around three thousand and it's broken out for our gifted students around two hundred. As you will see on the graphic, when we think about our special education prevalence data, we're looking at students with disabilities. Majority of our students are being served, um, with the category of specific learning disability. Second, um, highest is our students that are developmentally delayed from ages three up to age nine. Um, and then our third highest population are students who have speech and language services. At this time, I would like to present to you our Director of Special Education Programs, Ms. Dana Nelson. And she is going to go over an update around our instructional focus, professional development and staffing. So please welcome Ms. Dana Nelson.
Thank you so much, Dr. Lowry, and thank you to our board and to our superintendent and all of our constituents and faculty and staff who help to support the work that we do around special education instruction and student achievement. If we'll go to our next slide, you'll see some of the goals that, uh, we've set for our instructional special education department and team. Um, we focus on our early childhood, as Dr. Lowry mentioned, as part of that distribution of service delivery as well as our students that are being serviced in a K-12 environment. Um, we also, uh, last year, we exceeded the goal of ten percent in our reading, ELA and math. And we hope to meet or exceed that as well, not only for our K-12, but in our early childhood, uh, programming. If you take a look at our next slide, one of the main focuses for our instructional development is focused not only around evidence-based practice, but also high leverage practices, which is part of what the council for exceptional children has distributed as the best practices that work in concert with those evidence-based practices for instructional, uh, delivery for special education. Um, the next slide demonstrates, uh, the team that we have. We cannot do this extraordinary work and this, uh, heavy lift with trying to make sure that our teachers have the preparation and support that they need in the classroom as well as our peer professionals and that the instructional delivery is the quality and efficiency model that we expect not only for students who are being serviced, uh, with disabilities or have exceptionalities, but that we would expect and want for all children within our system. We have a small but mighty team and still have some unfilled vacancies that we are looking to fill for this year. But we have been able to accomplish, as you look at our sixty-forty model from Diane Sweeney, where we spend our time not only in direct support in the classroom, modeling, providing job embedded professional development, but also a list of the services that we provide. On the following slide, you'll see a comparison of the data from the previous school year to now for first and second quarter. Although our team is much smaller, they have still delivered an exceptional level of contact that is at impact for our teachers uh, that are beginning in the career, those who have sustained in the career, and those who we would consider are veterans in, 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 um, the career of special education. So we've had eight hundred forty-seven coaching events, which is up from the coaching events from last year. But we also are still spending, um, quality amount of time per event when we are with our classroom teachers and your care professionals or anyone who, uh, requests consultation from our team. I want you to look specifically at some of our specialized teams that we support, which is the BIT. Um, our Behavior Intervention Team that supports general education as well as special education. And if you look at the trend data for the prior two school years, we have already surpassed, uh, the expected number of referrals. So this is a good sign that not only are we getting our, our work promoted out in the field, but also people are relying on us to provide this support. So it leads us to think that we'll probably have to do some expansion of the team or also look to how we can partner with some of our tier one and tier two behavioral health services as well as, uh, student services to see how we can provide additional support at the lower level so that we can, uh, reduce some of the, uh, behavioral intervention team referrals over time if needed. Our autism support team and instructional staff is part of what KSDE through TAZN, uh, offers to make sure that we are doing, uh, what we call autism educational diagnoses. And so these are, uh, very intensive diagnoses and observations that take over twenty hours worth of services. You can see that in year, school year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, we were at twenty-two referrals. Um, this is our way, again, that we are able to identify students who have educational need for, uh, has educational impact because of their autism diagnosis. In two thousand twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, we had an overlap of those behavior intervention, kind of double dipping of those referrals. So we wanted to eliminate that and have refined the process. So you can see that by this year, first, second quarter, we're already at this twenty-two and we're protecting that we will be at about fifty before the end of the year. The next slide just gives sort of a greater description on what that work looks like and all of the touch points. So far, out of the nineteen referrals that we've had this year, two of them have resulted in educational autism, uh, determinations. And we plan to expand that team by four people by January. And we plan to expand that team by four people by January, by the end of January. If we go to the next slide. Um, you'll get to see some of the great work that our teachers along with instructional uh coordinators are doing in the field. We've listened to the request from our specialized program staff and teachers to say we need more support and guidance, so. Our teachers, DeWanda Dawn, who is a Schlegel High School, Ashley Downs, who is a teacher. At Emmy Pearson and then Jay Tillman, who was a Harmon High School teacher, along with our instructional coordinators. Developed this specialized program handbook. That provides detailed descriptions about what is expected in those programs, what you might see, what supports are available. And also just as a resource guide to administrators and other building staff who might be curious about uh what this programming was. We also distributed as part of our instructional onboarding to our professionals and staff joining the team. Uh, after they uh already missed our beginning of the year orientation, so we thank them for that important. Here you can also see one of the great resources that we use within the department that um. It's one of the flagship items that we're using, but it also helps us not only with our instructional delivery, but with our compliance and writing legally defensible. IPs that are data driven and based on performance of the students. As you can see, in the first uh two years, we had still the highest number each year for usage across the nation, so KCK is on the map. Uh, for being one of the highest users of this tool, um, and each year we've increased significantly. This year, we are projected to have by the end of the year over seventy three thousand uh user hits. We are already almost at during this first and second quarter where we were one, two years ago for the entire school year, so this is extraordinary. And we find that um not only teachers are finding it useful, but we're also making it is also available to our general education partners. So more people are starting to use it, and on the next slide, you'll see some of the comments from people on how it's been a game changer. How it's helped them differentiate their practice and their their um. Instructional practice for students, also with progress monitoring and that they feel like it has just been a game changing. Uh, effort for their goal writing and their practice in general. On our next slide, you'll see some of the continuous improvement and innovation strategies that we've used. Um, to improve instruction across the board for our students by aligning those programs, by focusing on. Instructionally sound practice and continuing to collaborate with our peers and improving um that collaboration also. Uh, content peers in general education. Now that brings us also to what are some of the innovations that are happening within professional development staffing? Um, we do use all of the stat, the professional development time that is indicated in our. Uh, district calendar on Wednesdays as well as on those specialized Fridays. Or days where we have uh significant full day time to work with our teachers. We provided over forty eight hours of differentiated instruction, um, we do have to provide various specialized groups, so. Our related service providers, our peer professionals, our specialized programs, there's a long laundry list of people. That we have to customize training to work on any given day, so we're excited that we're able to do that. Buy them in these categories that have been listed as a need and we respond to that based on the data that we receive and feedback from our teachers and staff. In terms of our um staffing, this is one of the exciting things that we like to always celebrate. Um, as a department and it takes lots of hands and it all, you know, there's always a saying, many hands make the work light. We do have many people uh with our HR department as well as with our health services who's helped really fill some of those vacancies. And those medically fragile classrooms that are very uh difficult sometimes to find staff. That have the training as well as the heart and the desire to make sure that our children will be highest and most significant needs are having their needs met. Uh, in a in instructionally sound way, but also in a medically sound way. Um, so we have lots of people who are helping to get the work done as well as our uh staffing agencies and our sub staffing. The exciting part is that we have set a goal internally that we want to maintain minimum, we always want one hundred percent staffing. But we know that life happens, and so we'd like to always be at that ninety five percent threshold, which is much higher than. Uh, when you look at nationally, what happens not only in education in terms of teacher turnover and um. Not being able to fill rates, but also particularly hard-headed special education. Where we have related service providers, we're at the hundred percent threshold right now, as well as our speech language pathologists, ninety eight percent. Our teachers ninety five percent and then also our peer professional, it's under the ninety percent, but. I'm excited because we do have about ten that we will be staffing in next week and going through our instructional onboarding process. That we instituted this year to help with that uh acculturation and onboarding for our staff. Here's just a summary of the data that we have as it relates to what our fulfillment rates look like at each level. Um, again, in early childhood and I have a column there for ESS, which is that sub uh service company that we are contracting with currently. We do have one hundred percent coverage for those classrooms and with those peer professionals. At our elementary schools, which includes our specialized programs as well as our students who are in SLC or gifted classes, we have um ninety two percent overall. Um, in our middle schools, we're at ninety eight percent. Um, high school eighty five and then our alternative programming as well as private and parochial, it's at seventy nine percent. So of course, we do want to increase those numbers, but those uh numbers represent some of the smaller populations of our students. And then the notes, you'll notice that we do have vacancies, but given uh numbers that many of our partners and county um. Um, neighboring counties had for the beginning of the year vacancies over two hundred eighty four and peer professionals in some. And as many as one thousand five hundred uh for teachers across the state, we are really excited to see. Uh, numbers like this and percentages for fulfillment for Casey KPS. The exciting part also is that we're getting lots of employee referrals, so it makes us excited to know that our staff and our community. Um, are saying, hey, this is a great place to work, grow and learn, and so uh we are always excited when we see those kinds of numbers as well as that. Output from our community, Dr. Lowry.
Thank you so much, Dana. I'm going to try to advance this slide, it's kind of stuck. All right, well, thank you, Dana, for providing us that update around professional development, staffing and our ongoing supports and priorities. And I would like to move us into a discussion um about our efforts around our priorities of oversight and account ability. And so I always start with sped down disciplined data. Um, this is a topic that um I must always keep at the forefront of our district as a priority. As we um typically have some type of financial implication for when we have significant disproportionality. Um, for our students and specifically students within different ethnicities. Um, who have disabilities and are suspended uh at a higher rate, and so. When we're um have our students that are not in the learning environment. We always have to be thinking about ways that we can improve our systems and processes to ensure that we. Are engaging our students, um, even though they have our challenges with behaviors and things of that sort. So I want to share where we were last year when we talk about sped suspensions. So last year data from August to December, we had two hundred and eighty five sped suspensions throughout the district. Ironically, we are at this, we were at the same point of suspensions for this year through December one. So not a lot have changed with those numbers, but those numbers are lower than what they have been in previous years. What I do want to draw your attention to is looking at class one and class two offenses as it states in our student code of conduct. Last year, we had sixty nine sped suspensions for class one and class two offenses. This year, for the same period of time, we're down forty six, so there is some improvement. With ensuring that we're following the student code of code of hand, code of conduct and making sure that. We are intervening um before these things happen and also making sure our restorative justice. Um, programming is is working for our students and families. However, because they are class one and class two, there is still room for improvement so that we're not seeing any. Suspensions for those class one and class two offenses. So I will continue to be a champion of change as the district continues to improve in this area of sped suspensions. What I have here is just a definition that I always include to just make sure that the board understands. What is classified or considered as significant disproportionality? This definition definition comes exact from the state regulations. And this is what our goal is for our for our um district to always be. Less than three point oh risk ratio for in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions. And all suspensions, so this is an area that we are constantly monitoring. Um, we are faced with some situations as we're looking at the latter part of this year to make sure that we are not. Um, suspending students greater than ten days because it will impact us, and if we have three consecutive days. Or not days, but three consecutive years where we're over that three-point threshold, that's when we get into those implications. Of losing fifteen percent of the funds, so it's just important for me as the leader of this department. To continue to be a champion of this change, to have these conversations at the district level so that we can continue to support our buildings. Our building leaders around how we um support students with behaviors. Moving on to our other um stakeholders that we value so much in special education is our parent request for evaluation. We started tracking this data when I came in um for that full year in twenty one, twenty two school year. And as you see, we have two years of full data represented and we have data up until December. So we have received um two hundred and five parent referrals. Our parent requests for special education evaluations so far this year, it is elevated. Um, but I don't mind that, that just means that we are more intentional about recognizing our students. Seeing our students and seeing where some of those gaps are and seeing the struggles that our students have and our parents. Are feeling comfortable about the process of being able to vocalize, hey, I think something might be different for my child. And so we welcome parents to do those requests and we just follow the state um guidance on how we process those. But so far, we have received a a increased number of parent requests and we will continue probably on that trend for the rest of this year. And we will be able to update you towards the end of the year where we end up for our final number. So as I move into my final three slides, I do want to highlight some of our um efforts. To um continue the improvement of our sped culture and climate and to truly get better every day. And so there is a list of bulleted things that we have initiated over the past year or two. And we're continuing to do this as we're getting good feedback, not only from our um our community. And our parents, but we're getting good feedback from our special education staff. And so I just want to highlight how my sped huddles have been, I get really excited because I was a little nervous in the beginning about starting this process. But I am so grateful that I did because I have an opportunity every month to sit down face to face. Um, via our um virtual platforms and talk to sped teachers in Paris, they jump on when they can. And we're able to to seek clarifications, I'm able to build capacity with them, and for me to be able to do that. Um, I just consider it to be a a blessing, and so so far this year, I've had forty nine teachers in Paris attend my sped huddles. The feedback that I'm receiving is that they agree or strongly agree that our sped department is headed in a positive direction. Uh, and one of the beauty, the beautiful parts about my job is that I've implemented a new process where they can just. Request for me to come out to just see great things, and so I've received seven classroom observation requests from our staff. Um, from just celebrating students, students that are making significant improvements. Seeing really good instruction from our special education teachers and then just to be able to go and observe. The teaching and the learning that's happening in our buildings, in our specialized classrooms. And so I am really proud of that and I'm excited that we're going to continue um to offer these sped huddles to our staff. And last but not least, um, I am excited to invite KU back to follow up on the environmental scan that they did for our district in twenty twenty two. Um, just so we can get a pulse and do a progress monitoring, where are we now with the with the department? What are the perspectives of the different stakeholders of what we're doing to better serve our students and our parents and our families? And so um they will start, um, actually this week, KU team will come in, they will start doing some focus groups. Interviewing staff, various stakeholders, just to get a pulse on where we are today in twenty twenty four. So I plan at the end of the school year when we have an opportunity to be before you again to offer you more of a full report. Um, as we wrap up the December one count in the end of the year. And I look forward to being able to share this as we learn from our KU feedback. So that I can plan for the next three to five years of our special education services. So at this time, I would like to open it up for any questions or feedback.
Thank you, Dr. Lowry, Ms. Nelson, lots of great information as always. Um, as we continue to work to improve um what we're doing for our students, so would open the floor for any questions or feedback, Mr. Mylan.
Yes, yes, sir.
I'm sorry, you're on mute.
Thank you, I'm sorry, uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, thank you, Dr. Lowry and uh Ms. Nelson for your diligence, your fine efforts in your, in this work you're doing. And your presentation, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
I might have missed it in the presentation, but in the student-teacher proportion. Uh, is there a quota uh per student? Teacher, I think you know where I'm going in force and place uh for the purpose of overcrowding. Uh, in 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 this realm of special education, uh. Is is there, is that something that you all are are uh that's in that's in place? Proportion wise, uh, I I hope I'm explaining that correctly.
Absolutely, thank you for your question, yes, we have um uh guidelines for caseload analysis. And so when we think about our early childhood and elementary special education teachers' caseloads, when we look at the the ratios. Um, we have up to seventeen, eighteen students that any of those teachers can case manage. And then at our middle and high school levels, they can go up to twenty two, twenty three. Um, and that's the how we have developed it here to try to um keep those numbers low, but I do have to say that the state. Does not have a minimum. Um, they, we have our colleagues across the region, sometimes they're case managing thirty five students because there is no minimum or maximum. But what we try to do is to put in some guidelines for staffing when it comes to the case management. Because it's not just about the number of students that we're serving, but it's all about the needs that they have, so you might have ten kids. In your classroom that you serve in a specialized program, but they're with you majority of the day and their needs are so significant, so we take all of those things. Into consideration and we've developed our own staffing and guideline analysis to ensure. That we are aligning to what the needs of the students are, but also understanding that the work of a special education teacher. Is a very multifaceted between case manager and instruction, but that is what we do here in this, in the Wanda Cooperative.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Russell. And Ms. Drew.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions, um, the first one, and you don't have to answer it today is. Um, I wondered, you talked about the recruitment um aspect and I'm thrilled with the number of folks who are being referred. I wanted to see if you could send us a breakdown of the retention data. Um, specifically for sped, I know that the board has previously seen um retention data across the district. But I think that's an important topic and I think HR's uh theme rise and retain. Um, continues to remain relevant um in the sped department um for reasons that I won't get into tonight, but I think that's an important part. Um, for our district overall, and so I'd be interested to see the data um for um sped. Secondly, my other question, did you talked about suspensions? But I don't recall seeing the data around race. Um, and one thing that I know we've been working on um intentionally, um, also. For other legal reasons is the data around race specific to African-American males or students. Um, did you share that data or can you also share the student? Data as it relates to suspensions by race or ethnicity with us as well?
Absolutely, that is, um, both of your requests is something that we can put together and get to to you and the and the rest of the board members.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drew, and then Dr. Win. You're on mute, Ms. Drew.
I'm sorry, I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Laurie and her staff uh for the work that they're doing. You you have to crawl before you can walk and we're beginning to see positive improvement that is happening in special education in there. Uh, the behavior among the students as well as parent engagement in helping. So I'm sure that as we continue to move down this path, we're going to see some adequate growth, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drew, Dr. Win.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Dr. Lowry and your staff, I have two questions, please. Um, does the Wanda County Cooperative meet as a as a. Does the Wyandotte County Cooperative meet as a, as a, do you directors meet separately on a regular basis? And when is that?
We meet once a month. It's typically the third Thursday of every month. And the board members consist of Dr. Stubblefield, representing our district, Dr. Dane with Piper, and Superintendent Dan and Rick Mullen for Bonner Springs.
And what time do you meet? Does that meet?
It's typically between eleven and twelve.
Okay. All right. And secondly, we had a sped task force meeting last Friday. Have you been informed as to some of the early recommendations?
Not exactly. Are we talking about the funding task force?
Correct.
Not far as early recommendations, far as what the state or what the legislation is going to do. But I am aware about the campaigns that the districts are engaged in to make sure that we're getting a story out about what we're doing. So I'm aware about that piece.
Okay, well, the final report to the legislature probably will be out in ten days, so if you need a copy, let me know, and I'll make sure to get it to you.
That would be great to get one. Thank you so much, Dr. Winn.
You. Additional comments, feedback, questions? Dr. Lowry, just really quick on, on my end, and I don't have to necessarily address it if you don't have the information tonight. Just, and I apologize, I didn't send this to you in advance. Two questions. One is, you spoke about the work that we do. Obviously, we have, we have a very diverse district. Can you maybe touch on how, I know you all do this, but how you engage with parents of other families who speak other languages, with all the different languages that we have in our district, and how we're supportive of those families? And then the second question is, and if I missed it in your data around, are we tracking, or how do we track chronic absenteeism with our sped students? I know that's something that, at the state level, is being looked at quite a bit, and as a district, we're also really trying to track and reduce our absenteeism. So curious on both of those.
Thank you for your questions. And the first question on how we are supporting our, our families that speak other languages. Well, we, we obviously use this, all of the resources that the district uses together. Far is our welcome center, our propio translation services. In special education, we're by law have to give communication, written documentations to parents in their native language. So it's just a part of the work that we do to ensure that everyone receives the information in their native language. Even with our sped parent hotline number, parents call that number when they have questions. They're able to even text in their home language, and I'm able to use that technology tool to translate that information and to respond, and then respond back in their home language. So we use all of the other programs that the district uses, but we're kind of, we are required to do it. So it's just second nature for us to make sure that we're communicating in parents' home language. On that second question about chronic absenteeism, all that data is being tracked at the district level. I do believe there is an opportunity to improve how that is communicated across the different departments, as this is something that's very important for special education, because if we're not aware that students are not attending, we're not able to follow our, our special education law, which means that we have to provide certain notice to a parent. We have to provide certain letters informing them that their absence and that it's impacting their ability for their student to have access to their services. And our state law clearly says that our parents must make their child available to receive special education services. And if they don't, they must provide to us in writing that they are choosing to provide special education services privately. So it, it, we do monitor chronic absenteeism. We, we monitor absences as well, because when we miss more than ten days of a student in class, that means that they are not accessing their education, which is what is required, and we have to respond accordingly.
Great. Thank you for that. Additional questions? Ms. Russell, I don't know if you have any question or... Okay. Thank you. Well, as always, Dr. Lowry, thank you for the information, and Ms. Nelson for the information. Board, as questions do come up, I know there was a lot in there, please submit those to Dr. Stubblefield, who will then send them to Dr. Lowry, and then we can make sure we get any responses back to the board. And we will continue to move forward in this work. So thank you for the information. Thanks for sharing with us tonight.
Thank you for your time.
And Mr. Lopez, I'll just add, when KU finishes their environmental scan of sped, anything that is pressing before sped comes back to do their report in June, we will make sure we communicate through the, to the board, either via the board meeting or some other matter. So I just wanted to share that they will present again in June, I think at the first or second meeting in June.
And Dr. Dr. Lowry, thank you, Dr. Stubblefield, for that. Dr. Lowry, quick question. Remind us, I know you have a committee made up of parents and teachers, and I believe Ms. Drew is on that. You all meet, is it quarterly?
Yes, we meet quarterly with all the stakeholders that you mentioned, here at Central Office for at least an hour. And so I have those dates available. I know we just had a meeting in November. Our next one will be coming up, I want to say, in January or February. I'll just double check, but I can get those dates to you. I know Vice President Drew serves on that committee, but any board members are also welcome to, to join us at any time as well.
That's great. Thank you very much. Yeah, if you could share that, and, and we can make sure we get that to all board members. Thank you. Ms., Dr. Winn.
Sure, I was gonna wait till later, but this is probably the best time. At the Friday Task Force, we elected Melanie Haas as the chair, who is the Chair of the State Board of Education, and I was elected Vice Chair. So please get that, those dates to me, and I will serve on the subcommittee. So I will probably come to you with a lot of questions about special ed. But the main recommendation is that the task force will recommend to the legislature to take the State Board of Education funding formula, of course, since the, since those who want to not follow that are in the majority, that recommendation may stop there. But a lot of your, as you know, a lot of your rural schools are having the, probably the, one of the loudest statements is that their caseload is really high. So while they may be of the majority party, they may be a little bit more willing to vote to accept the State Board of Education's recommendations. But again, for the full information of the board, the school formula, funding formula expires soon. And so there's that concern as well. So something for us to concern ourselves with. So I will be speaking with you regularly, Dr. Lowry. Thank you.
You, Ms. Russell.
Yeah, and since Dr. Winn brought it up, I was gonna save it for my comments, but I thought now would be the perfect leeway time to just share my gratitude, and I think our, our sped community's gratitude for Dr. Winn and her leadership, both previously before this session, but also taking on the role as Vice Chair. The meeting was much more productive, and the recommendations that came out of the committee, which will now go to the full legislature, do support us fully fund, or the state fully funding sped, as well as other recommendations. Now we will see how that plays out during this session. But I, I really want to express our sincere gratitude for your leadership in this area, both here at the local level, but also across the state, because we know how important it is, and how much we value people taking responsibility for the things, especially since Kansas has a surplus of dollars in their spending allowance, but we won't get into all of that. But I just wanted to express and share my gratitude, as well as the sped community, for the work of you, Dr. Winn, the committee, but also what you guys will continue to advocate for in Topeka this upcoming session. So thank you.
Well, thank you. And again, we had to force the meeting, because it wasn't gonna happen if we didn't.
After the other meeting was canceled, yes.
Correct. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Again, thank you, Dr. Lowry, and to your team. So we'll continue with our agenda. Next on our agenda, item number ten, board, we are under our policy review. First up is our first read of our board handbook. Hopefully, you had a chance to review that. I know it's been a little while since we revisited this, since we visited the handbook, but we wanted to wait to allow Mr. Mylan to join the board and for him to have some time to sit with the handbook as well. If you'll recall, at one of our last retreats, we did make several recommended, recommended updates to the handbook, just to keep it current. So this will be something that we will continually look at. So this is up for a first read, if it is the will of the board. If there is a motion to accept for a first read, the handbook.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion?
You know, I would really like us to consider adopting some set of rules that the community is familiar with. While we do not go by Robert's Rules of Order, but, you know, the community is used to Robert's Rules of Order. So when we don't operate under a known set of rules, folks think things are really weird. So there is no prohibition to using Robert's Rules of Order. It just clearly states, we do not. But if we choose not to use that, then I believe we should use some recognized body of, of rules. So that's my suggestion. I do not have a formal, I mean, we use Mason's Manual, unless you're in the legislature, no one ever here has heard of Mason's Manual.
Thank you, Dr. Winn. I think that's a good suggestion, just to make sure. And, and this, we want to make sure that the community and everyone has access to this handbook, and then whatever else we move forward with, just for, for the sake of communicating, so that folks understand how we operate. So I, I think it's a good suggestion for us to, to look into as we bring this back for a second read down the road. And at our board retreat, again, something for us to consider discussing some of these items as well. Additional feedback, questions? Not, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan, Jr.?
Robert Mylan, Jr., yes.
On the Brownlee Page?
I would say yes, and I hope we do address whether it's Roberts. We said no, but at least let's make sure we don't just leave it in the wind. Talk about it. So my vote is yes.
Thank you. Ms. Rachel Russell?
I just echo Mrs. Page's remarks. I think I was also surprised that we don't use Roberts' rules. And I don't think, as shared in Dr. Winn's, I don't think it hurts anything. I think it just provides more guidance. And so I look forward to continuing this conversation at our upcoming board retreat, as well as any other changes individuals have that they'd like to make to the board handbook. So I will vote yes.
Thank you. Dr. Winn?
Dr. Winn, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item, board, is the policy updates recommended by KASB. These have come out. We are at the suggestion of Mr. Goheen, and just for the sake of making sure that we all have the updated and corrected versions of these, Mr. Goheen, would you suggest that we table this item for the next board meeting?
Yeah, so the attachment that the board sees to the meeting agenda, which is what we received from KASB, lists and identifies the policies that they're making suggestions on, but it doesn't include the actual recommended changes to the policies. So we want to make sure we get the, the, through no fault of anybody at the district, this is just something we need to clarify with KASB to make sure we have the right, right thing in front of you to look at. So I suggest, I don't, I don't know if it's tabled, or if we just pass on the item tonight, and we'll put the actual change, proposed change policies on the agenda for the January, the next January meeting.
Thank you. That was my question for clarity about tabling. I didn't know what was on the agenda for the next meeting, but it seems, we have a lot of policies that we've decided to wait on. So I just was thinking about the length of that meeting, as well as celebrations and all the other things, so.
The only thing I was, there's no official report at that particular meeting. At the second meeting, there's a brief, well, not a brief, there's an update for, about the dual-language program, but there's no formal report. And the dual-language information, I think, we sent ahead of time, and it's just seeking board approval, but we don't have a scheduled report for the second meeting.
So could we just, for the sake, again, just to make sure for the agenda, and to make sure that Mr. Goheen and Ms. Smith have time to get with KASB, just again, pass on this item tonight, and then place it, not necessarily, it might be the next board meeting on the twenty-third, or whatever date that is. Or if we don't have the actual versions, it could be at the meeting after that. Do we need a motion to table or to move, can we just?
I, I would, I wouldn't table it, because if you table, technically, that means it has to be taken up for the next meeting, and based upon the same item. And we want to make sure we got all the policies in front of the board to consider for changes. So I would just pass on the item tonight. We'll repost it for the next meeting, or if you prefer, the first meeting in February, and we'll get all the, all the items up in front of you.
Great. Thank you.
That gives the board time to look at it, too, ahead of the meeting a little bit better.
Thank you. Okay, so we will pass on this item this evening, and we'll continue with our next agenda item, is we will hear from our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
Good evening. I am pulling up my, actually, I'll just go off the cuff. First, I, I had it on my list as well to congratulate and thank Dr. Winn for her service at the legislation and being an advocate for not only KC KPS, but what's best for all students, and serving in the various leadership roles in that capacity. We also just want to remind everyone that next week, and I'm sure you all have this on there, the board on Thursday, January eighteenth, will have a listening and learning session, and we are introducing the World Cafe style. We have communicated to parents directly, and will, and community members, and will continue to share that information throughout the week. And as I stated at the top of the meeting, it is Board Appreciation Month, and I do appreciate each and every one of you, and we look forward to celebrating with you at the next meeting. That's all that I have.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. Minor brief as well, just a, really, we want to make sure that we are getting the word out on the board listening session next Thursday, and just a big welcome back to all of our students and staff, except today. But really looking forward to a great semester as we move forward, and just everyone stay safe and warm as we continue on and with this cold. So I'll open up the floor for any board members. The, the one additional thing, item, board members, you received an email from me, and thank you, Ms. Russell, for the follow-up on the additional committee. Since Ms. Humphries' departure, that's left a couple of openings on a few of the board committees. Board members, if you have an interest in serving in any of those that were vacated by Ms. Humphries, go ahead and let myself know, or Ms. Smith know, that email is out there to you all. Mr. Mylan, if you have any questions on any of those committees that are out there, please reach out to Ms. Smith, or myself, or Ms. Drew, and we can, or Dr. Stubblefield, for sure. We can fill you in on what the, the roles of those committees are. You can find the, the information on our website as well. But we, at the next meeting, we would like to fill those seats for those committees that were mentioned. So with that, I'll open up the floor to any other board member for comment. Ms. Russell?
Yeah, I have a lot of thank-yous. If you are not aware, today is National Law Enforcement Day, so I just want to say respect, pay my respects and say thank you to the wonderful men and women of our KC KPD Police Department for all that they do every day to make sure our buildings are safe and secure. I also wanted to share my appreciation for those individuals. I may have shared this la, at our last meeting. I may have shared this la- at our last meeting, um, both communities, staff, um, and everyone who was involved with the facilities master plan study, um, that has come to a con- a close. Um, but also want to thank um, Edwin and the communications team again for continually making sure that that information was available on our website. Um, for anyone who was looking for more information about the process, um, and look forward to discovering the outcome. Um, later on this spring. And then lastly, I just wanted to share my respects and thanks for each and every one of you, um, as a fellow board member. Um, I, it is with immense gratitude that I have the privilege to serve alongside each of you. Um, you are each uniquely you, um, and uh, we have, everyone brings their strengths and um, opportunities to the table. And so I'm just grateful to have the opportunity to get to know each of you, um, and work alongside you for the betterment of our district. Um, and in addition, I'm excited to share that I have officially accepted the appointment um, from the KSB um, Board President to serve as an ex officio board member for KSB. Um, for this uh, this calendar year. And so um, I will be joining Ms. Dr. Win um, in Topeka next week um, for training and my first board meeting. And so I am excited for that opportunity, um, and look forward to learning more about how I can uh, support our state school board members and uh, the future pipeline. So thank you so much.
Congratulations, Ms. Russell. Well deserved. Additional board member comments? Seeing none. Um, we'll continue with our agenda. Next on our agenda is our executive session. Um, we can probably release staff who are not part of these uh, executive sessions.
Yes, so um, staff is released with the exception of Sam Redevan, Doug Clements, Steve Lilly and uh, Jud- Dr. Campbell.
Great, thank you all. Have a good evening. Um, so now entertain a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. Um, at seven thirty for ten minutes with Dr. Stubblefield, uh, Mr. Goheen, Mr. Clements. Uh, Mr. Lilly, Dr. Campbell. Sam Redevan.
In summary, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Um, any questions? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Junior?
Robert Mylan Junior, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Win?
Dr. Win, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clements, I'm going to email you the link now. I don't think I've sent it to you. Thank you. Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Junior? Wanda Brownlee Page? Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell here, present.
Dr. Win? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, now entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect privacy interests of all parties involved under coma with Dr. Stubblefield, Dr. Campbell, Sam Redevan, Steve Lilly and Greg Goheen invited to be present. Going in at seven fifty-two for five minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Move, seconded. Thank you, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you. Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Junior?
Robert Mylan Junior, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Win?
Dr. Win, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're back in open session, board. Uh, as I said in my um, email earlier today, we are going to pass on item C. Um, to give us a little more time on the compiled um, report that we received. Um, so we will bring that back forward at the next board meeting or at a subsequent board meeting. Um, so with that, there are no other agenda items. Thank you all very much for your time tonight. Welcome, Mr. Mylan to the board, um, and uh, staff and everyone, stay warm, stay safe, and we will see you at the next board meeting. Have a good evening. This meeting is adjourned.
All right, thank you. See you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Bye.